Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, September 3, 2019. We welcome you here. I hope you had a wonderful Labor Day weekend. I know there was a lot of activity that was going on this past weekend, and I would like to start by saying congratulations and thank you to all of our staff for another fine job with the Carolina Tattoo Arts Gathering that went on over the weekend. I know we had a great crowd of people here for it and everything. I hope it went off well, Chief. It didn't have anything, as far as I know, good. Glad to hear that always. So, we all was down a couple of times, and it was a very nice event. We appreciate the support. Also, we'd like to keep everybody's thoughts and prayers as the hurricane continues to move up the coast, coming in toward Florida now and turning as it comes up. We don't know what it's going to do. Watching all the reports, it seems to change all the time, but it looks like it will come somewhere into the Georgia, South Carolina, and North Carolina area at some point. So, we will be praying for everyone in that path, praying for everyone in the Bahamas. I know who was hit really hard down there. I know there's a lot of power outages and problems and issues there that they'll be straightening out for a long time. But we hope that everyone will be safe, and it will continue to turn, maybe go back out to sea. So, please keep everyone and your thoughts and prayers over the next few days as we continue to watch Hurricane Dorian, as it continues to move. We will start now in just a second with our moment of silence. I'll ask you to rise for that, and then please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in a moment of silence.
Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, our first order of business will be to administer the oath of office to the Honorable Mr. Ralph Presswood, who will be joining our council. And I would now would like to introduce the Honorable District Court Judge, Chief District Court Judge, retired, the Honorable Judge Robert Brady. Judge, thank you for being with us and for coming out to help Mr. Presswood as he takes this big step tonight.
Thank you. I think I first, Sheila and I, who's here with me tonight, my wife, first became aware of the Presswoods, you know, early on after I came here. But when we built the house directly across the street from them is, I think, when we really got to know them a lot better. And we personally observed their commitment and dedication to the City of Lenore and Caldwell County, not only through various business ventures that they've came involved with, but also innumerable hours that they've given as volunteers. I know someone asked her about volunteering, but they've just given innumerable hours to events and festivals here in the City of Lenore and in Caldwell County. So, I have no doubt that he will be an invaluable member of this council, and it's truly a privilege for me, Ralph, to be able to administer this oath. If you'll come forward, please, and Jane, if you'll come up as well and hold the Bible for him, please. If you place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye, Ralph Presswood.
solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
and laws
and laws
of the United States
of the United States
that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
and I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
to the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers
and to the constitutional powers
and authorities
and authorities
which are or may be established
which are or may be established
for the government thereof
for the government thereof
and that I will endeavor to support
and I will endeavor to support
maintain and defend
maintain and defend
the Constitution of said state
the Constitution of said state
not inconsistent with
not inconsistent with
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
I state your name
aye, Ralph Presswood
further swear
I pledge
that I will execute
that I will execute
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of councilmember
of councilmember
the City of Lenore
the City of Lenore
North Carolina
North Carolina
to the best of my ability and judgment
to the best of my ability and judgment
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations. Sound exactly.
You've got to spill with real whistle, man.
Let me be the first to say congratulations to Councilmember Presswood. If you would, please join us on the podium. Judge Brady, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're always welcome, Sheila. Please come back anytime. Thank you for being with us. Yeah, we kept it warm for you. How about that? Okay, we'll move on. We do not have matters scheduled for public hearings this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items consisting of minutes from the City Council Meeting of Tuesday, August 20, 2019, Item B are minutes from the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, August 27, 2019, and Item C is a resolution for the 2020 Census Partnership, and approval of this resolution will be in support of the 2020 Census Partnership with Caldwell County Complete Count Committee to bring together a cross-section of community members who will utilize their local knowledge and expertise to reach out to all persons of our community. We do have a guest with us tonight, Mr. Mark Lestoria, who is the Partnership Specialist for Western North Carolina with the United States Census Bureau. And as we get ready to do that, I do have the 2020 Census Partnership. I'll read parts of it. I'm not going to read it all. But whereas the United States Census Bureau is required by the U.S. Constitution to conduct a complete count of the population and provides a historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy. And whereas the City of Lenore, North Carolina is committed to ensuring every resident is counted, whereas federal and state funding is allocated to communities and decisions are made on matters of national and local importance based in part on census data and housing. And whereas census data may help determine how many seats each state will have in the United States House of Representatives and other things. I'll skip down. Whereas the City of Lenore, North Carolina will work with Caldwell County Complete Count Committee to bring together a cross-section of community members who will utilize their local knowledge and expertise to reach out to all persons of our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Lenore, North Carolina is committed to partnering with the United States Census Bureau and the state of North Carolina and will, one, support the goals for the 2020 Census and will disseminate the 2020 Census information; two, encourage all citizen, excuse me, all city residents to participate in events and initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the 2020 Census and increase participation; three, provide Complete Count Committee members and census advocates to speak to county and community organizations; and four, census support takers as they help our county complete and accurate count; and five, strive to achieve a complete and accurate count of all persons within our borders, adopted by the City of North Carolina City Council this, the third day of September, 2019. Mr. Lestoria, come forward in. We're welcome. Glad to have you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, Mr. Hildebrand, for the invitation to speak to you tonight about the 2020 Census. As you stated, I'm Mark Lestoria, Partnership Specialist for North Carolina, one of about 30 in the state. It's important to know that I live in North Carolina. I currently live in Charlotte. Prior to that, I lived in Cumberland County and Harnett County and around the Fort Bragg area for about 17 years, and then moved to Charlotte about three years ago. I'm also fortunate enough to own a beautiful piece of heaven right outside of Collettsville that my wife and two kids, we spend every single weekend at. And if I could take an extra day or two off as well, I'd get up there also. And we enjoy every minute of it. And I got to take the family to Southern Crossroads for breakfast over the weekend, and they really enjoyed it. So, that's my wife's new favorite spot.
Thanks for helping the economy.
Yeah, exactly. It's important, as you said, two key things with the 2020 Census. It comes down to political power and the tax money that we pay every year to come back to the local economy. So, with that being said, I'd like to go into a small presentation and then yield the rest of your time to questions or concerns that you may have. Okay. The goal for the 2020 Census is to make sure that we count everybody once and only once and in the right place. No one ever complains about an area being overcounted. They always complain about an area being undercounted. So, we want to ensure that we are getting out there, identifying where people live, making sure the census is available to them to take, and then we get the response and we get that rolled up. With that, as you know, the decennial census occurs every 10 years as mandated by the Constitution, but there are also other surveys that the Census Bureau carries out in between that period. There are annual American Community Surveys, then an every-three-year American Community Survey, and then an every-five-year American Community Survey. So, if you think about the 2020 Census, any decennial census, it is a snapshot in time. We want to make sure that everyone living in America, not a citizen, everyone living in America is counted on Census Day, 1 April, 2020. That is our snapshot in time. The American Community Surveys demonstrate trends and get you that key business data to see if people want to expand a business, start a new business, or if you see any types of trends in other demographic areas that you may want to highlight and address. As I stated, the census is carried out in the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2. Prior to the Revolutionary War, it was estimated that there were 1.6 million people residing in America. However, the first census was carried out in 1790, and it came to find out that there were 3.9 million people living in America, and that first census was carried out under President Washington's tenure. Fast forward 230 years as we go into 2020, we are now trying to count 329 million people in America. That is a significant leap forward, and we want to count them once and only once and in the right place. And what's key about that is the political power, as we already stated, and the economic impact of that. The political power, as you said, sir, there are 435 representatives in the House of Representatives at the federal level. Those seats are allocated based on census data. Additionally, each year, the U.S. Congress disperses $675 billion of tax revenue back down to the state level, comes down to the county level, and into the cities and towns as well, and funds key programs. That is a significant amount of money, and if you calculate that over a 10-year period, it's over $4 trillion, excuse me. This is a heat map of congressional seat gains and losses. We've all seen it. It's not anecdotal. We've all seen it, the exponential growth that has occurred in North Carolina. All you've got to do is look around and see how many different license plates are driving through our towns now, and they're coming from the states that are in green, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Michigan. Everybody's coming down here. This heat map from the 2010 census shows that South Carolina picked up a seat, Georgia picked up a seat, Texas picked up four seats. So, what are the projections for the 2020 census? Right now, what's at stake is strong estimates show that North Carolina will pick up one more seat. If the count goes very well, we will pick up two more seats. And it's going to come from those states that are hemorrhaging seats, and that allows us to have more political power and sway at the federal level. These numbers here represent the Western Piedmont Cog. I'd like to just draw your attention to the bold data. Caldwell County and then the City of Lenore. You have the 2,000 response rate in the center column there, 71%. At the county level, 73% at the city level. Flash forward up to the 2010, it jumped eight points at the county level and seven points at the city level. Significant jump. The main reason for that jump is a strategy that the U.S. Census Bureau employed, and that is the Complete Count Committee. It was not present in the 2000 census. It was present in the 2010 census. What that Complete Count Committee is, is collecting up the trusted voices in a community and conducting outreach with the people that reside in that community to get them educated, engaged, and energized to complete the census and respond to the census. So, with that said, the 2010 population for the county and for the state is in the far-left column. What's in the far-right column are the no responses for 2010. And what you're seeing is 21% and 20% respectively. That is, if you put that into a dollar amount, and if you look at the information that Bob Coats, the Director of the Governor's Complete Count Commission, has, that is a significant amount of money that's left on the table. And everyone needs to respond so that money comes back in, because as we know, you can have the greatest need in an area for those federal funds to come back in, but the money doesn't follow the need. It only follows the numbers. And those programs, as you know, education, healthcare, transportation, social services, you know, one of the key things that people think about all the time is the School National Lunch Program. You know, that is funded through census money, or I'm sorry, through tax money that comes back in through census data. Transportation, roads don't build themselves. You know, all that money that comes back down from the federal level, that's all the tax dollars that we're talking about, $675 billion per year. I just want to make sure that we all know what's at stake, because I drive on those roads. You know, I go to the hospital. My kids are in public school, much like everybody else here in this room. You know, if we can get the rest of the community behind that, we could get those numbers back up to a much higher rate. And don't get me wrong, Caldwell County and the City of Lenore are standing good. They're very close to reaching the governor's goal of 82%, but I think we can do a lot higher and grab in tens of thousands of dollars more back into this area. A lot of people are concerned about privacy and confidentiality of the census data. It is important to know that anything that we respond to on the census is sealed for 72 years. That data is collected, compiled, and tabulated, and then presented to the President of the United States no later than the 31st of December, 2020. And then it'll be put out into census blocks and tracks so that you can drill down on that data. But that's as low as it goes. Your individual responses, excuse me, are sealed for 72 years. And the reason for that is everybody, you know, way back when they established that law, that was the life expectancy. If you were present for that first survey and the next, or the first census and the next census, that 72 years was a life expectancy. So, say I pass on after, you know, the census and the kids want to know what was, what the dad put down in his response. My wife or my children are the only ones allowed to access that data, period, a direct descendant. So, you could go back to your great-grandfather and look at his census data, or what your great-grandmother would have put down as well. But that's the level that that is secured at. Additionally, we don't share information with other government agencies. What is compiled and tabulated, that is the end result of that. We do not share it with local law enforcement. We do not share it with ICE. We do not share it with the FBI. It has been challenged in court and has been upheld. That information is secure and will always be secure. Any information that a canvasser or lister may come across, they are sworn to preserve that information for life. So, if a lister goes out and is verifying addresses, and they come across Ms. McClady's house, and they make sure that Ms. McClady, that's still her address there, and the next-door neighbor comes over and says, hey, you know, I haven't seen Ms. McClady in a couple of years. Does she still own that house? We all know that information is a matter of public record, and we could find that information very easily. But that lister is not allowed to divulge that information, even if it's in the White Pages. That's how strictly that oath is enforced, and it is also enforced that it could be punishable for each offense, up to five years in prison, or $250,000 fine, or a combination of both. It's also important to note during the census, much like any big national campaign, there's always somebody out there working in the margin, working in the black on that, trying to exploit what's going on. Census personnel will never ask for a full Social Security number. We're going to only ask you to verify the last four or five digits of your Social Security number. We're never going to ask for a monetary donation. We're going to never send, we are never going to send information on behalf of a political party, and we're not going to ask for PINs or passwords or anything like that. Any type of lister, canvasser, or even myself will have an identification badge, and the canvassers will also have a satchel as well. And that information will be provided to all the points of contact at the county level, down to towns and cities as well. Again, demographics, a lot of the information that you find in surveys, and take, for instance, the Pew Research Center, that all starts with census data. And those are the other American Community Surveys that I talked about that pull in and gather those trends as well. Again, the decennial census is that snapshot of time. Everybody living in the United States and where they're living at on Census Day, 1 April, 2020, is that snapshot in time that we're going for. So, if somebody just moves into the City of Lenore on March 31st, they should really be filling out their census data on 1 April for the City of Lenore is where they reside. What's key about the 2020 census is this will be the first national census in the world that will be carried out on a computer or smartphone. We expect 90% of everyone who responds to a census or an American Community Survey to respond to the 2020 Decennial Census online or by smartphone. 9% remaining of that, that's where the Complete Count Committees come in to develop strategies and tactics to motivate everybody else to fill out their survey online or by smartphone. I'll use Collettsville as an example. I spoke with Dr. Phipps over at the school, I'm sorry, the superintendent for the schools in the county, and I pointed out Caldwell has a K through 8th grade school, or I'm sorry, Collettsville has a K through 8th grade school. But the people that reside in that area don't have steady access to broadband internet, and they also don't have a cellphone signal in most areas. He has agreed to open up the schools on Saturdays, and in a partnership with the two churches in Collettsville, they will motivate everybody in the community to come down and use those computer banks at the school to fill out their surveys. So, those are the types of strategies and tactics that we're looking at within the Complete Count Committees to make sure that we get everybody counted once and only once and in the right place. And then for the remaining 1% that we can't quite make that happen, there are two things that can happen. They can still do it the old-fashioned way, which is getting a hard copy of the actual response questions and filling that out, mailing it in, or calling the 1-800 number and responding over the telephone. Or they can wait for the canvasser to come around to their address. The canvasser will come to each address that has not responded, knock up to three different times at that location, and if they cannot get anybody to respond at that location, they'll go over to a neighbor, and they will get the best information they can from a neighbor. And that's how we're going to try to get to 100% of everybody responding for the 2020 census. A key to the 2020 census is that we are hiring over 6,500 personnel in the state of North Carolina to support the 2020 census. Those are the listers and the canvassers and the backside support personnel. We like to hire people local in the area because they know the area. They are a trusted voice, a familiar face as they go door-to-door. Now, that being said, there are a lot of help-wanted signs in this area, and that's a good thing. It's a strong economy. When you go up to Walmart, the first thing you see is they have open applications, and they're hiring right away at $11 an hour. What's different about these census jobs are they are part-time jobs with up to full-time hours. You can pick the days that you want to work and also the hours within those days you want to work. They pay from $13.50 an hour up to $19.50 an hour, depending on your experience. Plus, you need an automobile, because you have to get from point A to point B, and you will get reimbursed at the government travel mileage rate of 58 cents per mile on top of that. Training will be provided, and they will also be paid during that training period. So, it's a great opportunity for college students. It's a great opportunity for stay-at-home dads or stay-at-home moms who are keeping up with things with the children in the household. And the Census Bureau loves senior citizens. They're very dependable. Senior citizens are looking for a great way to stay engaged. I'm not calling anybody here a senior citizen. Let me be clear. But senior citizens are dependable, and they're always looking for a way to contribute back to, you know, the place where they were born and raised, or the place that they're calling home as well. What's key to all of this is the time to apply for these jobs are right now. It's generally a 60-day pipeline to get people brought on board, and the reason for that is because they have to get a federal background check. And even at the public trust level, that federal background check takes about 60 days. Again, what I'm looking for is, you know, providing you with this information, asking for the resolution of support for the 2020 census, and ensuring that we're able, as a community, to count everybody once and only once and in the right place. So, that way we have proper representation in DC, and we're bringing back as much as that line share of money that we pay out in taxes each year is brought back to this community so we can go forward and do good things. That being said, I'd like to reserve the rest of this time to basically take on any questions that you may have, listen to any concerns that you may have about the 2020 census. Okay. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
What will be the, how will you get information out to try to stimulate that heavy response you're wanting from online and smartphone behavior? So, what are we going to begin to see? Ad campaigns? What will prompt me as a citizen or as a responder, not necessarily citizen, a responder, to go to my smartphone and do that? How will you get that information out?
Well, regarding campaigns, information campaigns, at the national level, you're going to see a very large, wide-range campaign start on Super Bowl Sunday. There will be a Super Bowl commercial, just like the 2010 census. Coming down into the state level, that's already ongoing. Every chance they get, they're pounding that in. You can listen to public radio and hear at least once a week, they're talking about the 2020 census and what it's going to do for western North Carolina, which is a great thing. Coming back into the county level, Deborah Murray is going to lead the Complete Count Committee for Caldwell County, and she's going to develop strategies and tactics to make sure that we're reaching everyone in all four corners and every hauler out there to make sure that they're counted once and only once and in the right place. What's going to drive you to that computer or your smartphone is in March, in five different tranches, the Census Bureau is going to mail out a letter to each listed residence. That residence could be a house, an apartment. It could be somebody living in a motel as well. And it's going to give them an alphanumeric sequence. They'll take that alphanumeric sequence, go to the website, enter that in, verify their name, that address where the letter came to, and then they can complete their census. 10 questions in 10 minutes. That's all we're asking. The long-form census that we all grew up with, you know, the one that I can truly remember is the 1980 census. They wanted to know how many bathrooms we had. That's the American Community Surveys that I was talking about earlier. So, we want to make sure that we're getting everybody counted once and only once and in the right place by just asking 10 questions in 10 minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Bill?
The presentation you just did was really succinct and well-done. Can we publish the PowerPoint that you just presented to us? Could we put that on our city website or our social media platforms, things like that?
We can get, there's a longer version of this, and then there is the short version that has specific information for the Western Piedmont Cog. I just have to get that one slide cleared, and then once I do that, you can actually publish this shorter publish this shorter version if you choose, or you can have the long version up front.
Okay. I think that would be really great because our social media has been getting lots of hits, and then, like, for me personally, I'm a teacher at Collettsville School, by the way, and I know if we can get this information out through government entities, we reach a lot of people in Caldwell County really fast.
Absolutely. And I hung flyers.
I think with him and is getting this information put together.
True, yes.
Great.
And the post office in Collettsville was very helpful as well for allowing flyers to be put up.
Okay.
My question's around security. I mean, with the phones, the phone surveys and all that good stuff, which is great, I think is fantastic, but it's like you said in the presentation, there are going to be people that say, hello, I'm with the Census Bureau, and for $10 I can do this, I can expedite this for you, or whatever like that. So you got all these bad people. Are you guys doing anything on that front to go to like our senior centers and those types of things to really kind of say, look, this is how this does, just to kind of combat that?
Yeah. There's actually three responses within that question. First, anything like a nursing home, I want to address that up front. That is, goes into the group count, which is also like prisons, dormitories, barracks, things of that nature. Reaching out to the seniors center as well, that is already being incorporated at the Complete Count Committee level, and then there are information videos that are going to be made available that can run on the public access channel or in waiting rooms and things of that nature too that are educational in nature that says this is what a canvasser does and does not do. And then there's an additional layer within that. As we know, there are a lot of people that come to America and they don't speak English, and children end up becoming the navigators for those families. Those children become the trusted agent and will fill out the census for the family. Anybody within a community-based organization or faith-based organization that holds an event to allow people to come in and use computers or a hotspot to fill out their census, they may have someone there to help them fill out the census, but they will only ask them the question, and they may say it in Spanish or Laotian or something of that nature, and they will put their response in as-is. They will not guess or anything like that, but that all comes through the training that occurs at the Complete Count Committee level. I hope I answered your question. If not...
You answered my second question with your final answer there, which was about the language issues, about how are you reaching out to the Latino population, the Spanish-speaking population, the Maong populations that are prevalent in these areas? So that was...
And we do have information that is published in 12 different languages, but when I was meeting with Caldwell County Schools, I was informed that there are actually students that speak 28 different languages, and they just had a family that showed up from Egypt, and nobody in the family speaks English. So there are challenges out there. That's why we lean heavily on the community to help us through trusted voices, elected officials, formal leaders and informal leaders to develop strategies and tactics that work.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions?
Good information.
Very good.
Very well done.
I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
And the best way for us to help is just to be advocates? Is that...
Be advocates, public endorsements, attend census events. Mr. Hildebrand agreed to several number of commitments. Those commitments are very benign if you're to read them, but when you actually go out there and participate in them, that says a lot. We all lead by example when it comes to the census, and our word ends up becoming our deed, and people follow.
Got it.
We got the resolution.
Excellent.
Thank you, and we wanted to thank you for being here. Great information. Any way we can help, anyway, please let us know.
Thank you very much for your time. Council members, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you again. We are still on the consent agenda items. We presented items A, B, and C. If there are any other questions or comments, if not, we need to vote on the consent agenda as presented.
I'd like to make a motion that all the consent agenda items A, B, and C be approved.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C as presented. No other comments? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you. Carry unanimous back to 7-0 again.
Oh, man. Forgot what that was. 6 to 1.
6 to 1?
You get caught no matter what you do.
Would you have voted no?
You can't say that because...
He asked him a direct question?
He's not allowed to talk.
I'm not going to discuss my views of the census.
Okay.
Good answer. Okay. Thank you again for all that, and we'll move on then. Tonight, next on the agenda is requests and petitions of any citizens, if there's anyone that would like to. Jane, we welcome you, by the way. We didn't get a chance to say congratulations to you earlier. We thank you for being a part of all of this and for what you already do, and Ralph, both council member now of Presswood, have been great citizens in our city and have always been a great part, so we thank you for that part. Seeing no one else to address us tonight, we'll move on. There are no reports of boards and commissioners tonight, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor of Council, a couple items for information this evening. The 34th Annual Sculpture Celebration will be held on Saturday, September 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at J. Hebrew Hill Walking Park. Cruising will be held also on Saturday, September 7th, beginning at 4:00 p.m. in downtown Lenore. The City-County Services Committee will meet on Monday, September 9th, at the Community College at 11:45 a.m. The Caldwell County Economic Development Commission will meet on Tuesday, September 10th at 8:00 a.m., and that will be held at the Civic Center. The ABC Board will meet on Thursday, September 12th at 7, I mean, at 2:00 p.m. at Lenore ABC Store Number 1. The Tourism Development Authority meeting for Thursday, September 12th, has been canceled, and the next meeting will be held in October. The Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, September 12th, at 6:00 p.m., Third Floor City Hall. The Sanitation Division's Annual Trash Bash Week is scheduled for Monday, September 16th, and will go through Friday, September 20th. Information about that is online at www.civelenore.com. The NCDOT's Fall Litter Sweep Campaign begins on Saturday, September 14th through Saturday, September 28th, and that information can be found on the state website, www.ncdot.gov. And lastly, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will meet on Monday, September 16th, 6:00 p.m., and that's going to be held at Optimus Park Clubhouse, and that's...
For clarification, item number one, the annual Sculptures Celebration, I believe, will be at the T.H. Bull Hill Walking Park, not the J.E. Bull Hill Walking Park.
Okay. Did I say that wrong? You're correct.
But visit them both.
Yeah, absolutely. Welcome to go to both parks. Thank you. Thank you for that correction, Councilmember Stevens. Who's related, by the way? Okay. Any other questions or anything of the city manager?
We've talked about a litter sweep event for city employees. Do we have a date on that?
I think the tentative date is Wednesday, the 18th.
Okay.
Yeah. Wednesday, September 18th. That's our plan. We'll do about the same thing we did in spring. We're going to do it pretty good to spring and fall, in line with litter sweep and in line with that trash bashes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, anything that's going on? Lot coming up. This is beginning into the fall season with Sculpture Fest, of course, and then October, still Cruisin's going on, and then, of course, the barbecue. Smoking in the Foothills Festival is October 18th and 19th, and a lot happening there. You got to tell me, I don't know what it is. Oh, that's right. Point at him. Yeah, National Night Out, our police department, is October 1st, and that will be the same night as we have a council meeting, and we'll do like we normally do. We'll have our meeting and then come downtown. Always a great night. I know you've got great things planned for that night, so please put that on your calendar. Thank you for reminding us of that. So a lot of good things going on in the fall. And then after that, it's Halloween, and then Christmas, fall that, it's all here.
Ice Turkey.
The Turkey, yeah.
Turkey Day.
Turkey Day.
Chris.
Yep, on that, so that'll be good. All right, we'll move on then. Any reports from our city attorney? Mr. Rohr, any report? Okay, nothing from you. I think we, I have covered everything that I had on the agenda tonight. Anything from any of our council members that need to bring up? Yes, sir.
I would like to say that it's a pleasure joining all you experienced councilmen, and please help me along, help me learn fast, and I appreciate any help you can give.
Thank you.
It's not like you haven't been involved.
Yeah, we thank you for having the confidence to come and be a part of this, so we appreciate that, and having confidence in us that you want to join, so we're excited about that. Hopefully, we'll continue moving. We have a lot of great things happening in our city that we're very proud of, and over the next few months, I hope we will see a lot of that come to fruition as we continue to move forward. Nothing else to come before us this evening. We stand adjourned.